Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, November 28th. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kail Smith, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Submove, Madam President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations, and I have one to be presented for Get Involved. Will Tom Baker and crew please come forward? Well, it's half the audience. I thought people just wanted to watch us. Okay, Tom Baker, you have to come up here with me and pronounce the names, okay? So if you know Tom Baker, he was on County Council for a while and left there and is doing even more amazing things and in the North Hills and beyond. So I just want to thank you for all the work you do for the region. Thank you. And you're gonna say, he's gonna say the names, so don't mess anyone up. Whereas founded by Allegheny County Councilman Tom Baker, Get Involved held its 14th Annual Pittsburgh Service Summit on Thursday, November 16th, at the Coro Center for Civic Leadership. And whereas Get Involved Incorporated enables student leaders and young professionals to stay active by providing a variety of leadership-focused events, service-oriented programs, and courses and inspiring trainings throughout the region. And whereas awards are given annually to local young professionals ages 21 to 35 in the nonprofit business and governmental sectors who dedicate their time and talent to community organizations and who are making a positive difference in the region. And whereas, congratulations goes out to the following individuals. I'm gonna have you say the name.
Okay, all right. So we've got some local legends here. For the Person of the Year this year, we have Sally Power and Lynn Banazak. Congratulations. Child Advocacy Award is Brian Jacobson and Nelson Cooper IV from the Pittsburgh Cardwell Academy. Dr. Tom Baker Community Leader Award, that's not named after me, that's named after my late father that taught his whole entire career in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. That's Kanu Sani and Dr. Eric Kaufmel. We've got both of them here. I'm sure many members of council probably have 15 to 20 selfies in your life with Kanu, so. Our Emerging Leader Award went to Michaela Fogel, who's here with us today. Head alum from MSW program. And our Western PA Rising Stars, many of them are here today, so they can raise their hands when I say their name. Chastity Bay from the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. Joey Brantle. Morgan Cadel. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Joe. Sarah Carrick. Cory DeSantis. Jared Duse. Cody Gill. Samantha Gooch. Carly Martin. Erin McMaster. Ariel Meadows. Reagan Micky. There's Reagan. Catherine Miller. Erin Ortega. Lindsay Aquino-Robles. Vince Russo. Lexi Stevenson. Jess Vogliena. And Catlin Weiser. So it's a great group of rising stars again this year, and we're very proud to be here. Back to council. I'll give it to you to finish out, Council President Kail Smith. Sorry.
I'm gonna give you time to say a lot. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Get Involved Incorporated for encouraging young adults to be more active and engaged in their communities and for organizing the annual Pittsburgh Service Summit. And be further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, to be Get Involved Incorporated Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Submove.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Now you get to talk a lot.
Okay, sorry. I got into proclamation mode, and I'd enjoyed that for eight years, so. Well, this is an incredible group of people. That's the most important thing. We've got some incredible honorees. If it's okay, we'll just make sure everyone gets a proclamation. Everyone's names are listed on all of them. Thank you to Council President Kail Smith and several of you for being incredible friends over these last 14 years to the event. The event has always happened in the city proper. That was true again this year. The first year we had it at Union Project. We had it for eight years at Carlo University. We had it at the Ace Hotel. 2020, we had it in community parks, city parks, just to make sure that we still had somewhat of a ceremony. This year was at the Coro Center for Civic Leadership for a third straight year. We get, that's right, let's do it, yeah, for the Big 15. So it's been a wonderful event over the years. I'd like you to just learn the favorite thing that each of these wonderful people are involved in. One of our main phrases that several City Council members have heard over the years is, "Don't be bored in Pittsburgh, be on a board." I know the spelling is different, but that's the mindset that we have. Do good, help others, be a leader in the community, be a helper in a community that is always looking for helpers. I will say, my co-EMC this year was pretty cool, everyone, right? Because she was literally in Beautiful Day in the Neighborhood, so she was the mom in the Mister Rogers movie, which was pretty cool. She's also Yinz are Good, she's also You Jag Off Media, so she was a perfect, perfect co-EMC. But if everyone just maybe wants to say their name and their favorite thing to be involved with, is that okay? Yeah, come on up, yeah! Oh, yeah, come on, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we need you on the mic.
Good morning, Kanu Sani, and it's such a privilege to be here. I think it's, we are all privileged that we have a role to play in the community, and embracing that is, I think, part of our mission. And I am grateful for your leadership in getting us all involved, and I think there's so much good we can do. And that's what motivates me and drives me. Thank you.
All right, Cory, come on up, everybody.
Good morning, everybody. Cory DeSantis. First of all, Tom, thank you. Thank you to Get Involved for being recognized. What better way to celebrate Giving Tuesday than being recognized for all of the hours that we give back to the community? For me, one of my big passions is I am a soon-to-be two-time alumni of Slipper Rock University. It's an honor to be part of their Alumni Advisory Board. Love giving back and helping continue the tradition of helping students get their bachelor's, master's degrees and unlock a lifetime of learning potential. So again, thank you.
Here comes one of our two People of the Year, Sally Power. If you've never heard of Treasure House Fashions on McKnight Road.
I have, I have. So I'm Sally Power. I'm the founder and executive director of Treasure House Fashions. I love collaborating with over 60 agencies throughout the greater Pittsburgh area. But it didn't start because of a heart of philanthropy. It started because I was a mess. And so my mess has become my message. And so we provide clothing for over 60 agencies throughout the greater Pittsburgh area for free. But not only that, as you should be well aware, 61% of all poverty in Allegheny County is in the suburbs. And so we are a resource for people to buy notable brand-name clothing at ridiculously reduced prices. And we also have pay-it-forwards at the register. So when someone's struggling to pay for something, we say, "Someone that you don't even know cared enough about you to leave this, and so your bill is paid for free." And so that's a tremendous way to be good neighbors in Mister Rogers' neighborhood. And so it's an honor to be here. Thank you very much.
All right, Lynn Banazak, who's several you probably know. Former Athena Award winner, so that's like the Oscars of business and community in the region.
Thank you for that. Hi, it's a privilege to be here today representing the Kaylee Lynn McDowell Foundation. My family started the Kaylee Lynn McDowell Foundation in 2016 when my niece Kaylee passed away very tragically in her senior year of high school from an undiagnosed illness. And the passion that we are perpetuating were her passions. And so we do things like give scholarships to students who find common ground with each other, those that uplift each other and help one another to take to their four-year university. Kaylee was an ardent, ardent and excited supporter of your vote being your voice. And unfortunately, she passed away before she could register to vote. And so we have a pop-up voter registration event for young people where we've registered going on 2000 now, first-time voters to vote. And we know in the Woodland Hills community where Kaylee grew up that that's a ripple effect, that students that are voting for the first time are bringing their parents and their aunts and their uncles and their grandparents to vote, in some cases, for the first time. And we do have a kindness movement where we do random acts of kindness alongside these little kindness cards, and we have distributed over 35,000 of those since Kaylee passed away. So anytime I get to stand in front of people and talk about Kaylee McDowell and her legacy of bringing light and goodness into the world, it's an honor. And it's certainly an honor to do it for you today, so thank you so much.
Michaela's coming up. I just want to say too, a former Senator slash Secretary of State gave a shout-out to Kaylee once it was the 2016 nominee, which is pretty amazing. Fund Lynn Banazak Act, we once tried to do acts of kindness together and give out free slushies and free snacks at Get Go, and people were like, "What's up with you two?" It's pretty remarkable.
We were way too kind.
We were, yeah.
Hi, I'm Michaela Fogel. I didn't know we were speaking today, so I didn't prepare anything. But I work for North Hills Community Outreach as a service coordinator out in McKees Rocks. And then I also am a Girl Scout troop leader for a group of fourth and fifth graders out in Forest Hills. I was involved in Girl Scouts from five to 18, and then went back as a 22-year-old to lead the Girl Scout troop. So best organization ever, very happy to be involved with it.
Her mom flew from Wisconsin for the Service Summit, too. That's the longest traveling mom in history. Chastity Bay, who also just won, it's like the year of awards for Chastity Bay. She just won 40 Under 40 as well. She's on a roll.
Hi, everybody. I'm Chastity Bay. I work for the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. I do their community outreach education. So I think that might be kind of my favorite thing because I'm able to provide environmental education to people in their communities and not just in the big parks like Frick Park, and so that's what I like doing.
How are you?
Hi, everyone. I also didn't expect to speak, so here goes. But yeah, I think I'm lucky to say that my favorite thing is probably the main thing that I do, which is working for Connect the Congress of Neighborhood and Communities, where I have the privilege of advocating and expanding a program of criminal justice reform that has saved and shaved lives across the country. So I'm really glad for that. I appreciate this honor. Thank you all so much.
Hello, my name is Reagan Micky. It's such an honor to be here today and to be recognized. Thank you. One thing I like to say now is it's something to be a small part of something big, and that is why I get involved. Better to be that than a big part of something small. I'm involved with Hearth, which is a nonprofit in the Shaler area that houses women, specifically mothers and children, fleeing domestic violence situations or experiencing homelessness. I work with the children, and it is such a joy. There are 30 of them, and it is a handful. But it is such a joy to be a part of the community in that way, so thank you.
And Carly's mom actually came to the Service Summit on her behalf because she was out of town, which was only the second time in history. Marita Garrett's mom also accepted her.
Yes, my mom came and accepted the award for me since I was actually in Disney. But hi, I'm Carly. I am here to represent the Allegheny County Health Department. One thing I do want to mention is when I started in the health department in September of 2022, we were right about like half-staffed, and since then, we are now to a full team, so I do want to be thankful for that. In 2021, bringing on any new hires was a total of around 40 to 50 people. By the end of 2022, we were able to bring on 92 people onto the team to better serve the community. And today, now with a full team, we have been able to bring roughly now 84 people on, which were almost to our highest, which was last year. So I'm thankful to be able to bring people on board and to better serve the Allegheny County community.
Last but not least, Dr. Eric Kaufmel, who has a board meeting every night.
Thank you. I'm a retired healthcare executive, and I'm very fortunate that I'm able to serve my community. It's very basic. I'm here to serve. I'm here to serve my community, my church, and other things. When I put my hands on my heart, I was just also thinking about my son, who's a career diplomat. And his daughter, he's out serving over in Turkey as a political deputy. And my granddaughter, who's in fifth grade, British Christian School in Turkey, wrote a poem for me, "A Future to Be Proud of You." "It's all about you, not me, not her, but you. The future, what a place. It's all about unfolding. I wonder what it's holding? A mystery, a puzzle, or a clue? You will never know what we will if, will we hold for you or me? And the answer will be, it's up to you." I do say this because I've been in the past, I've been in the present. I'm looking to try to get other people to be leaders in the future, which this opportunity that I got for this award, it was very, very helpful. Thank you very much.
I'll just say to close, before we do group photo, so my co-EMC, Tristic Glover, she played many roles in this life. She was in A League of Their Own, the local show. But the most important role in her life, she also was Council President Teresa Kail Smith in Off the Record this year. So she got to be you. That's pretty fun, right?
I heard she wore a lot of makeup.
Thank you all. I will say as a Minideo, Risenstein, Alderweireld alum, whose dad worked at Miller, Beshear, and Pioneer, being here with you all means a lot to me, means a lot to this Get Involved movement. And hopefully everyone in the room learns something that you'd want to get a little more involved with today through these amazing honorees. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Everyone want to come up for the photo? We're gonna go on this side, okay? Sorry. Council members will come up and join us. And thank you. Someone mentioned that it is Giving Tuesday, so if you have an organization that you'd like to give to, you can make a donation to them. If you're able to make a donation, that would be wonderful. A lot of great organizations doing tremendous work in the city of Pittsburgh. Bruce, can you give these to them? Now going to move on to our next order of business, which is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to official, limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. When you are called, you have to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Suver. University of Oxford, University of Pittsburgh, University of London, among many other institutions where I have been educated. Also, Lome, Togo, it's the capital of Togo. A member of the American Physical Society. Nuclear Division, Quantum Information Division, and a few other divisions as well. I'm the Global Intelligence Society U.S. Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. One key for me is vote-by-voter verification for whom. No matter what the registration says, no matter what the vote is, we can't check our vote, and that is abysmal. We are seeking to change that. What we are after is maximizing pre-university and university educational quality for all of our kids via optimal information frames and information cues, intelligence cues of the 21 primary disciplines. This is the second key. A concern of this council and of Mr. Ganey is to up diversity in local government. But on the 13th, when Mr. Ganey spoke about the budget, where were the individuals of copper indigenous, bronze Latin, and gold Asian descent? Maybe 10 out of 100 people who are here? That's not satisfactory. Pittsburghers of gold Asian descent are 5% of Pittsburgh population. Pittsburghers of ebony African descent are 20%, this is U.S. Census information. Asian descent PPS students graduate in the top 5% of their classes. African descent PPS students graduate in the bottom 20%. This is all PPS information. Congratulations, Ganey and Walters. The Asian descent population at CMU is 20% of the total population. The African percent is 5%. Now, how do we account for these disparities? Is it because Asians are smarter than Africans? I don't think so. But there are factors. Asians over Africans point their kids to people who excel in the sciences. And it may be hard for many of you to get, maybe not you, maybe not you as councilors, but for our population, it's almost like they're deterred, our African-American kids. And I oppose that.
Our next registered speaker is Robert Murray Asken. Robert Murray?
I'm here.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, I apologize. Please continue.
Okay. I'm Robert Asken from Forest Hills. My remarks are following a letter I wrote to the councilors regarding the temporary managed communities idea, which I'm in favor of. My points basically are what we all know is time is the essence. And I'm recommending that it may be a very systematic, axiomatic approach where just, okay, this is what fact one is, and fact two, and three, and here's what we think, in order to be able to maximize progress in time. I agree with the notion of limiting 50 per site, 15 persons, which is at least four sites if we're gonna do 200. And I think the number's actually doubled, what the need is at least double that. So we're talking about on the order of eight sites. Obviously, funds are limited, we're doing everything. But I would like to say that the notion of tents is simply not the answer. From my studying over the last 10 years and going around the U.S. in various cities, Denver, all up and down California and so on, there's a lot of solutions that actually don't work, and I think it's time to avoid them. So in the case of the communities that are being considered, I think they have to be de facto gated. That doesn't mean they're chain-link fenced type of thing. But enough security, enough police presence coming, going, to make sure that it isn't just another den of iniquity. So I'm in favor of getting going, so we can get it done. And I think the key issue is going to be site selection. And I think that it could be an all-hands-on-deck process. But what I think is really good to do would be to somehow centralize all the communication so that everybody has a single place to go, the kind of Grand Central Station. It's just too hard to read about all the facts by reading the media. They do a great job, but it's just too confusing to get it from that source. So I think that the mayor's office or some other central point can be the place where all things can be funneled, and then we can go there and get the facts. So thanks for the opportunity to talk to you. I really appreciate all of what you do.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen, is she online? Thank you.
Here. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we, the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. That is not advisable. First do no harm is not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can't be held accountable. Now we have self-proclaimed Friends of the Mayor and others being told by people employed by the city to pursue the purchase of Bon Air School. This is clearly harassment on top of infliction of emotional distress and blockbusting. Are there deals for Friends being offered? Are there potentially kickbacks being set up? As a volunteer for Bon Air Green Space, I only receive thanks from my community members, and that is enough. Bon Air School building has sat unused for 20 years. It has deteriorated due to roof and mortar damage. The ceilings throughout have falling lead paint chips. Election pole workers sit in the building a whole day twice a year. Exposure to lead dust and asbestos is hazardous to health. Or did I miss the memo that lead and asbestos is now considered safe? Numerous windows have been broken and tagging in the building are due to youth breaking in and vandalizing it. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Wesley Drenning. Wesley? Wesley online? Wesley, one last time. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. We'll not take comment from those in chambers who would like to speak. Please approach the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record.
Yeah, sign the list. My name is Devin McLean. I'm from the Hill District. Sorry I missed a meeting last week, last couple weeks or whatever, but I found out that there's an ordinance somewhere that police aren't allowed to lie during investigations, right? And I think you guys need to do a little bit more to make that known to the police department and the public, right? Because when you have at least a 10th grade education and another adult lies to you on purpose to provide a shock to your conscience, right? Do you know what it's like to have a police officer asking you questions and laughing at the same time? It's kind of insulting, right? So it'd be nice if we could bring an end to that. I haven't had really many complaints about the way the police are operating, or, well, the city's operating. I just read there's a cop using marijuana fired a shot through his car, you know? Maybe you should implement more random drug testing along for the police so that we can jump out in front of problems like this before you get, you know? Thankfully, it wasn't someone's dog. Because we care about those more than some people around here, unfortunately, and I'm really here to let y'all know I haven't let up off of your necks. I may have been quiet a little bit. I may have taken a nap, but my eye is still on you. You still have things to do to make things right. You know what they are. How about a little bit of outreach? You know? I mean, I'm not saying that the nonprofit for the get-it thing you did, you honored them, you know? All of that is very, all of that is real noble, but you are Pittsburgh City Council. McKees Rocks, Shaler, Westmore, dude, really? When I first started coming here, I said, "Man, who do you work for?" Ain't none of you came up with a cogent answer, man? That's why I stopped putting my phone number on here, because you ain't gonna call me back anyway. The rhetoric.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Bill Neal. I'm the president and CEO of Champion Enterprises and Achieving Greatness Incorporated. I thank you for having me here today. I brought some friends and colleagues with me to emphasize a point for which we represent today. I will state that I am a former five-year employee with the City of Pittsburgh City Parks and 49-year volunteer community service. You may recognize my name from the Connie Hawkins Summer Basketball League, Willie Stargell MVP Awards Banquet, Franco Harris Football Camp, and many others. But I'm here today on behalf of the Pittsburgh City League High School All-Sports Hall of Fame that I come speak to you about every year to enlist your support and your attention. And I have some City League lifers with me that this year I brought along and not alone so that you have a greater emphasis of what we're trying to say to you. In the 200-plus years of the City of Pittsburgh, and the 140-plus years of the Board of Education, there had never existed a Hall of Fame for Pittsburgh City League. You have to think about that. It never existed until we created, until I put the proposal together to establish it. It is now an annual 500-plus people sellout event that recognizes 60 or more of the city's greatest all-time athletes. To my knowledge, only Councilman Lavelle has attended one of the events in the past eight years, although Councilman Smith and Coghill have donated. I simply ask that City Council individually donate to this effort. If you represent a district where there's been a high school, you should want to be on board. That, it's as nonpartisan and non-separative as you can get. It covers every high school in the history of this city that brings back the best of the best to be recognized for their accomplishments and achievements as high school student athletes. This is the largest high school award program in the state, probably in the country. 60 to 65 awardees every year. Eight consecutive years of sellouts representing names like Chuck Cooper, Kenny Durant, Ricky Coleman, Jennifer Bruce, Larry Brown, who from Shelly High School won a Super Bowl, Maurice Lucas, the only City League graduate in the history of the city to win an NBA championship, Karen Hall, and just a few. The mayor has been to four of the events. As busy as his schedule is, he's been at four of these events. While some of you, for whatever reason, have not attended, and what concerns me and bothers me is that you haven't seemed to care. I leave you packets every year. I never get a return. I rarely get a returned phone call in my effort to get you on board. And the most important thing that you might want to consider is this is a $75,000-plus dollar return on investment to the city. Gas, hotels, restaurants, et cetera. You should want to support this program, and I am continually disappointed, as a Penn Heels graduate, that you don't. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Hello, all. My name is Rachel Nance. I'm the executive director of the Thomas Merton Center. Our office is located in Wilkensburg, but I live in the Hill District. I wanted to talk about what's at stake if you don't act on the bill to amend the zoning code and push forward on plans for serviced homeless campsites. Particularly, the impacts prolonged exposure to cold weather will have on our unhoused neighbors' health. These facts are easily found with a simple Google search. Effects on the body include freezing temperatures can slow your blood circulation, heighten the body's sensitivity to pain, and cause muscle spasms. Cold stress can lead to serious conditions such as hypothermia, frostbite, transfoot. I'll talk more about hypothermia later. Heart attacks increase in frequency during the winter months, usually affecting those who already have an underlying health problem. A drop in temperature concentrates blood flow in the body core, increasing blood pressure, so placing more strain on the heart. Also, your body works harder to generate additional heat when it is cold. It has been reported colder weather makes blood vessels constrict, which can increase blood pressure and blood clotting, a major risk factor for stroke. How it affects the brain and emotional state. Cold weather can make you feel tired, have difficulty sleeping, have a poor appetite, leading to weight loss, fatigue, confusion, disorientation, excessive shivering, loss of coordination. It can lead to people feeling more depressed and anxious. Low body temperature due to cold environments can cause unclear thinking and limited body movement, which could spur confused thoughts or irregular responses. Now, prolonged exposure to cold will eventually use up your body's stored energy. The result is hypothermia. Body temperature that is too low affects the brain, making the victim unable to think clearly or move well. This makes hypothermia particularly dangerous because a person may not know what is happening and won't be able to do anything about it. Hypothermia is most likely at very cold temperatures, yes, but it can occur even at cool temperatures, even above 40 degrees. If a person becomes chilled from rain, sweat, submersion in cold water. I'm not exaggerating. People will die if this body, the mayor's office, and the county don't act now. People's bodies will be forever changed, making their lives even more difficult, making recuperating from being homeless an even steeper climb. So no more camp evictions. Provide services for our neighbors with no barriers. Do it this week, please. Thank you.
Any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name is Kenny Juice Bryant, more commonly known as Juice Bryant. But I'm going to take you back to a quick story that brings me right to this room in retrospect. So I'll talk about Kenny Bryant. My brother, Kippy Bryant, took me 11-years-old, signed up for baseball. How he knew where to go, we didn't have a father there in the household. And so I began my sports with baseball. It's when me and little Danny got together, brother Dave, and his dad, who was my first coach and mentor, Mr. Gino Honorato. For you, I'm sure you're familiar with who I'm calling little Danny now. And so that was out of Annunciation, which is now Pittsburgh Project. We didn't have much. And I'm thanking Mr. Bill Neal, and I'm here on behalf of Achieving Greatness. So we do get that on the record. And he's giving guys like myself, you've heard all the big names, but guys like myself also who never dreamed of being a recipient of the Hall of Fame. And when I was a recipient two years ago, just a look on my children's face and my family's face, something I never asked for, expected, living still what I think is somewhat of a humble life. And so this group here is really, it's touched a lot of us who otherwise would not have got this recognition. And so here we are today. But to go further into Annunciation, in my beginning days of sports, going past little Danny there, we can go to the Annunciation. My first touchdown, knee pass was down by my ankles, you know? When I went to look on the sideline, my first touchdown, about 80 yards, couldn't see anything, you know? Couldn't even see the lines, you know? Went to look over the sideline, my helmet would go in front of my face. I just, this is my beginning days as a running back, and I just knew to run. I've been running ever since. And my first cheerleaders, once again, come out of the Honorato family, and they come out of Luke's family. Yeah, Luke Ravenstall, yeah, his aunt, Linda Ravenstall, one of the first cheerleaders that I had in my life as well. There were two guys there, Tom and Jack, and they weren't old. You know, when you're little, everybody's old. But these guys, they were probably, in retrospect, about 20, 25, and they used to always punt the ball, man. The ball was way up there. I'm a little kid, but yeah, I grew into that, you know? Cockpunt in college and all that there. But those guys, Tom and Jack, Flairities. What I'm trying to do is trying to draw this connection between me right now and being in this council. These are my roots, Flairities, Ravenstalls, Honoratos. And then when I joined ABT Seminary, American Baptist Theological Seminary, I had the greatest teacher in the world and mentor, that would be Mr. James Sims, who I believe was the first African-American president of City Council. Is that correct? Sims, Reverend Sims? Reverend Sims? No? He was on, you can correct me. Pardon me?
Your time's expired. Thank you. We'll have somebody come back and give you that information. Can we have a next speaker, please?
Good morning. My name is Shayla Holmes. I'm here representing BPEP, Black Political Empowerment Project, on behalf of Mr. Bill Neal and Achieving Greatness.
My name's Roy Blankenship. I'm a community organizer.
One speaker at a time, please.
Okay.
Roy, you can come back up. You can go first, and then Roy will come next.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I work with the youth. I'm a mentor. I've been a mentor since I was a teen myself. I just always really believed in myself and being a leader. And I feel like our youth today, that's one of the things that they may be missing on, missing out on is leadership. And I feel this program, the Pittsburgh City League High School All-Sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony that Mr. Bill Neal and Achieving Greatness has created is something that we really want to support and continue. One of the speakers earlier talked about the future, you know? And being a young mom, having young kids, working with young kids, it is important that we make sure that these kind of programs are in place for our future leaders, right? Because as we honor those before us, it teaches our young people, it gives them something to look up to, it gives them something to go after in their own lives, you know? And these men and women that are being honored, again, come from, you know, neighborhoods where this was just something that they wanted to do, you know, being a young kid, you know? They wanted to try these sports, and they ended up being a success at these things, you know? And I know myself, I have a grandfather who played for Westinghouse, and my uncle played for Peabody High School Football. And I know, you know, being a young girl, sports has always been something that's important to me, and, you know, that's something I teach my kids as well. And we know even now today that there's a lot of young people that are involved in sports, and that's kind of keeping them, you know, off of the streets and out of, you know, bad, making bad decisions is what I'm trying to say. You know, you can look at Dante Green and the wonderful job that he's done coaching the Westinghouse Bulldogs, you know? So I just wanted to make it a point that, you know, this program, this award ceremony is bigger than just those that are being honored, right? This is something that I feel our youth are really going to begin to look at and say, hey, I want to be like one of those people, you know, so that I can get an award, you know? And I was just at an award ceremony at a church over on the north side where a group of young people got honored, you know? And those smiles on their faces, you know, was just something that I took away. So we want to keep those smiles going for not only our youth, but for those that have put the work in. And I feel everybody that Mr. Bill Neal honors have put that work in. So let's just support them moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam President and City Council members.
That's not what he usually calls me, but go ahead.
We are, we at the BPEP, the Black Political Empowerment Project, are here to support Mr. Bill Neal and Achieving Greatness. They've represented hundreds of students, maybe thousands over the years of our residents have been affected by their efforts to be in the community, to work with the school district. We all look at situations of violence and crime, as Shayla mentioned, what we, in the work we do and other advocates do. It's about giving these kids somewhere to sort of point that energy and something to do that's positive. Right now, this program and just the Hall of Fame ceremony, most kids, only 2% to 4% make it to the NFL. So less than that survive a career after college. So maybe that high school might be some of these guys' highest point of where they go, and then they go into the career field, but it still gives them pride in their community. It gives them pride to walk around with their children and be recognized, you know, as doing something and aspire to. What we are asking, in our 36 years of advocacy for community in the city and region, we've noticed Mr. Neal's efforts go for nothing but positive. And it's always helped communities and built more of a sustained network around sports. So we're just asking that City Council, just give it some serious thought, because if there's nine council districts, only three showing up to be a part, Pittsburgh has got to be a unified city. And we can rally behind the state, we need to rally behind our residents and advocates. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Now, we're here, you already know I'm a B-Pepper. You know, I've been coming down here in front of your face for some time. The reality of it is, it's a blessing to support Bill Neal's program.
Just say your name and neighborhood for the record, please.
Ma'am?
Name and neighborhood for the record.
Oh, oh.
You forgot, it's been so long since you came.
H.P. Jackson, Howard Philip Jackson.
Thank you.
Representing Black Political Empowerment, Hazelwood Initiative, et cetera. I'm his old brother. Now, let me get to the point. Bill Neal is a great human being. To advocate, to invest in our young people, and to honor them, okay? Imagine growing up, even low league, when you got your little trophy, and then you went to the next level, the football, basketball, et cetera. You know the activities, soccer. Understand what he's producing, that you could unify and support our youth, and acknowledge them, to let them know that, like, they gained something, they gave some history, they gave a part of themselves to participate. And then you have our young people to look at that generation and say, I want to be that guy. I want to be that female. I want to be that person. I want to become great. And they respected me. A lot of people have accolades, and people don't acknowledge them, and they feel like they don't exist. So help these people exist, our young people noted, like, they're appreciated. All right, even our young ones, you know, two, three, four-year-olds? We try to advocate and speak to teenagers. Boy, you lose your mind trying to speak to some teenagers, all right? You have to go ahead and catch your babies and influence them and have them have the role models to participate, because you don't know what's going on in them families homes, all right? The confusions and what they have to go through. Their escape is sports. Their escape to go to the playground. Their escape. And what? I love them to be appreciated at Mr. Bill Neal's stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any further speakers? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ernest Bay, resident of Homewood. I come to represent Mad Dads of Greater Pittsburgh. I'm also a board member of the Highland Park Tennis Club. I'm also with Reach, anti-violence group. I'm here to support Bill Neal in the City League Hall of Fame because I've been a part of these ceremonies. It's wonderful to see the participants of all your sports, the Big Three, football, baseball, and basketball, come back and celebrate with their families and loved ones. It's always an honor to see that type of recognition, you know, for the person who may not have achieved the big football career in college or professional. But as one of the members said, high school was one of those sweet times in your life that you really respect and honor those who have come from various communities. And one of the things, I was on a steering committee at one point with Bill Neal and Achieving Greatness, and I told Bill, I'm a tennis player, I'm a little biased, because like I say, I'm a board member of the Highland Park Tennis Club. And so I said, Bill, you know, there was Dean Hall who was a three-time champion in tennis. He said, well, let's honor him. I said, I put up his name. He was honored. Little did he know, the family, the Hall family, is one of the great tennis families in this city. And they all came about, you know, 20 or so, 25 members, to honor their loved ones. And that's what I see with Achieving Greatness does, brings families and communities together. So I would like for any member who of council truly try to appeal to your, you know, better angels and come and support these initiatives. I think you'll do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody? My name is Richard A. Stewart Jr. I'm here representing past president of Pittsburgh NAACP, Noble, which is Noble Chapter, Freedom Unlimited, BPEP, Mad Dads, and Navi Christian Ministries. I serve on all these boards. I'm just a little perplexed that City Council has not directly got involved, all the members, because I know each one of you travel. You hold Pittsburgh up as your home. You hold your neighborhood up, but you don't do anything for this. You, you hold your neighborhood up, but you don't do anything for this, this project. I'm from the Hill. Left here and went to Marine Corps in sixty-six, came back from California, okay? Went on to City, I was City Cop for a year and a half, retired commander from the Sheriff's Office. I live in Penn Hills, but I don't do anything. I do my work here in Pittsburgh, the Hill, Homewood, East Liberty. This is where I do my work. I talk to kids every day. I support that program. Anytime he calls, if I can't be there, I make a donation or I send somebody in my place. This is important, very important. Please, I implore you, show up. Because it's just not the Hill and Homewood and East Liberty, it's every neighborhood in this city. Do you understand what I'm saying? Just because it's white or Hispanic or whatever, it's every neighborhood he impacts. Please, I implore you. And then I'll be seventy-six this year, maybe I can retire and I can go fishing. Well, any rate, I thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Yes, I would please. Hello, good morning, Council. My name is Sam Schmidt. I'm an activist and organizer here in the Pittsburgh area. I'm a resident of Bellevue. Um, it's cold outside today, isn't it? I stand before you as, uh, for a second week as a homeless outreach worker and concerned member of our community to address a critical issue that demands our immediate attention and concerted efforts, the escalating crisis of homelessness in the Pittsburgh region. And to be clear, I'm here to speak in favor of, um, the zoning amendments sponsored by Councilman Coghill and Councilman Gross. Let's begin by examining the cost of inaction. As we speak, our city grapples with the consequences of inadequate shelter provisions. Unauthorized, authorized camps born out of desperation not only frustrate and concern the community, but also exact a heavy toll on public health and infrastructure. Cost of healthcare for individuals experiencing homelessness far surpasses the investment required for preventative measures, including the establishment of accessible shelters. Creating safe shelters and meeting the very basic survival needs of our unhoused neighbors would actually save the city thousands in, of dollars in public health and other costs. In Denver, offering supportive housing to individuals experiencing chronic homelessness saved fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars per year, per person in public costs. In this specific case, the savings were enough to offset the cost of the program and save thousands of taxpayer dollars per person. The strain of our healthcare system is not the only concern. Homelessness often results in arbitrary criminal charges, fines and fees that unhoused people cannot afford to take on and ACJ cannot afford to safely accommodate. Unauthorized settlements lead to damage to public infrastructure necessitating repairs that divert resources from other critical needs like permanent affordable housing for all, which is the real solution here at the end of the day. It is fiscally responsible for us to address homelessness head-on, preventing further strain on our city's resources and preserving the well-being of all residents with intentional safe spaces for those living without shelter and without a voice for their needs. The chilling realities faced by those living on the streets demand immediate action. The onset of cold temperatures poses severe risks this week, including the loss of appendages, permanent skin and nerve damage, hypother- hypothermia, and even the tragic loss of life that happens too often in these communities dur- during cold weather months. Our friends, family members and neighbors, many of whom are already vulnerable, face the cruel and unforgiving elements daily. This is not only becoming a humanitarian crisis, but also a testament to the gaps in our social safety net that we must urgently address if we still value the lives of the unhoused and can bring ourselves to consider their humanity. Um, I'm not going to read the rest of this because I'm run out of, I'm going to run out of time, but as a formerly unhoused person, I would implore you to please pay attention when your constituents are speaking and to please support these bills coming forward. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
How's everybody doing this morning?
Good morning. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
Paul Jesus Christ Harris from the Hill District. I'm gonna give you some education on the law. Uh, king, title of Hebrew rulers from Saul to Zedekiah. My name was Saul, but God changed it to Paul. Okay, and I, here, in the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God. I am the God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, the Lord of the universe. E porbas uno, the eagle has landed. Yeah. Then I saw an angel come down from heaven, having the key to the bottomless pit and a great chain in his hand, and he laid it on hold on the dragon, the serpent, who is the devil and Satan and bound him for a thousand years, and cast him into the bottomless pit and shut up a seal, shut up a seal on him that he should not deceive the nations no more until a thousand years were finished. But after these things, he must be released for a little while. And I saw thrones and they sat on them and the judgment was committed to them. And I saw the tho- the, the souls of those who had been beheaded for the witness of Jesus and for the testimony of the word of God, who had not worshiped the beast or his image. He had received his mark on their foreheads and on their hands. And they lived and reigned with Christ for a thousand years. All right, uh, the Bible is a book of names. Daniel, your name is in it, you and your kids. Stephen, Shabbat, his name is there, he was murdered for the testimony of Jesus Christ. This goes back before anybody was born. I'm telling you, this is serious, this is life and death. I wouldn't keep coming down here bombing you people. My father sent me and I won't stop until everything is fulfilled written in this book. I want you to go to the Concordians. I ain't with the technology. I'm with God, that's who I'm with and that's who I am. The God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob in the flesh. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess, please.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Good morning, Madam President.
Oh, thank you. Good morning, Councilman. I didn't see she wasn't here.
No.
I didn't know, thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Twenty-two oh five, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewerage Facilities Plan for Allegheny City Brewing Located at East Ohio Street and Emblem Alley at No Cost to the City. Bill Twenty-two oh six, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in, into the following publicly owned properties in the tenth ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Fif- Lot, Block Fifty-K, Lot Two-Fifty-Seven, Council District Nine at No Cost to the City. Bill Twenty-two oh seven, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in, into the following publicly owned properties in the tenth ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Fifty-G, Lots Forty-five, Forty-six, Fifty-three, Fifty-five, One-twelve and One-twenty-eight, Council District Nine at No Cost to the City. Bill Twenty-two oh eight, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in, into the followingly, following publicly owned properties in the eleventh ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Fifty-M, Lots One-Sixty-seven, Council District Nine at No Cost to the City. Bill Twenty-two oh nine, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in, into the following publicly owned properties in the thirtieth ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Fourteen-R, Lots Two-Thirty and Two-Thirty-eight, Council District Number Three at No Cost to the City. Bill Twenty-two ten, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in, into the following publicly owned properties in the twenty-second ward, City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Twenty-three-L, Lot One-O-One, Council District Number One at No Cost to the City. Bill Twenty-two eleven, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in, into the following publicly owned properties in the twenty-second ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Twenty-three-K, Lots Two-Ninety-eight, Two-Ninety-nine and Three Hundred, Council District Number One, No Cost to the City. Bill Twenty-two twelve, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in, into the following publicly owned properties in the eighteenth ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of the Allegheny County as Block Fifteen-R, Lots Two-Thirty and Two-Eighty-One and Block Fifteen-H, Lot Two-Ninety-One, Council District Number Three at No Cost to the City. And Bill Number Twenty-two thirteen, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in, into the following publicly owned properties in the fifth ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Ten-C, Lot Twenty-six, Block Twen- Block Twenty-seven-B, Lots Three-Ninety-two and Three-Ninety-three and Block Twenty-six-P, Lots One-Fifty-six, One-Fifty-seven and One-Sixty-four, Council District Number Six at No Cost to the City.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number Twenty-two fourteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with CDR McGuire, Inc. for Project Design Management Services and Reviews in connection with various City of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the preliminary engineering and final design phases, increasing the total not to exceed amount to three million six hundred ten thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-three cent, an increase of one hundred nineteen thousand nineteen dollars and four cent, reimbursable at either one hundred or ninety-five percent depending on a specific project. Bill Twenty-two fifteen, Resolution Providing Foreign Agreement or Agreements with A Libroney, Inc. for Costs Associated with Construction for the Sylvan Avenue Multimodal Path Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million six hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred seventy dollars and thirty-seven cent, of which one million seventy-seven thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-five cent is reimbursable. Bill Twenty-two sixteen, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the Sylvan Avenue Multimodal Path Project and provided for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million five hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, an increase of five hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars from the previously executed agreement. Bill Twenty-two seventeen, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Michael Baker International, Inc. for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Fees for the Penn Avenue Signals Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed seven hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-two cent, reimbursable at eighty percent. Bill Twenty-two eighteen, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design of the Penn Avenue Signal Improvement Project and provided for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed nine hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred sixty dollars, an increase of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at eighty percent. And Bill Twenty-two nineteen, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with MS Consultants, Inc. for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase for the California Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed eight hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cent, reimbursable at one hundred percent.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number Twenty-two twenty, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Twenty-three of Two Thousand and Twenty-two, effective December twenty-seventh, Two Thousand and Twenty-two, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-three Capital Budget, the Two Thousand and Twenty-three Community Development Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-three through Two Thousand and Twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program, so as to fund the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank at two hundred thousand dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements. And Bill Number Twenty-two twenty-one, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter Two-Ten Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Mobility and Infrastructure to accept a donation for Michael Baker International in the amount of ten thousand dollars to support the City of Pittsburgh Safe Ru- Safe Routes to School Program.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilperson Strasperger presents Bill Number Twenty-two twenty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Department of Human Services, OCR, Key Service Corp., located at One Fifth, One Smithfield Street with regard to the Two Thousand and Twenty-three AmeriCorps Summer Program in an Amount Not to Exceed Fifteen Thousand Nine Hundred Thirty-six Dollars. This payment is match funding for AmeriCorps members who work with the Department of Parks and Recreation during the Two Thousand and Twenty-three Summer Program.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number Twenty-two twenty-two, Resolution Amending Resolution Eight Thirty-One of Two Thousand and Twenty-One, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with core business technology for software, equipment and services related to payment processing and cash sharing system for the Department of Finance to order, in order to add services for the Bureau of Police by increasing the approved amount by sixty-two thousand six hundred fifteen dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed two hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred one dollars and sixty cent over three years. Bill Twenty-two twenty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Safety and the Director of Innovation and Performance to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with IK Systems, Inc. for Security Camera Maintenance, Integration and Support Services for a total cost not to exceed eight million thirty thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars and eighteen cent over five years. Bill Twenty-two twenty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or agreement with the Appalachian Regional Commission and Connect Humanities Appalachian Digital Accelerator Program for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to support a digital equity position in IMP. A local match of twenty thousand dollars shall come from the Innovation and Performance Operating Budget for a total project cost of fifty thousand dollars. Bill Twenty-two twenty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Atlantis IT Consulting Group, LLC, as needed for an enterprise-wide warehouse supply and inventory management solution at a cost not to exceed two hundred thirty dollars over one year. Bill Twenty-two twenty-six, Resolution Amending Resolution Seven Nineteen of Two Thousand and Twenty-two, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Cohen Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for renegotiation of the city's cable franchise agreements with Comcast and Verizon and for consultation on development of fiber and wireless telecommunication assets and policy by increasing the approved amount by sixty thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed six hundred fifty-one thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cent over four years. Bill Twenty-two twenty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Office of the Mayor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Encapsulate to upgrade the city's customer relationship management system and our related capabilities and processes at a cost not to exceed five hundred ten thousand dollars over one year, subject to appropriation by City Council on future budgets. And Bill Twenty-two twenty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the- And Bill 2228, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with the Wilson Group for the lease of multifunction devices and managed print services to include MFDs, all-related hardware, integrated and standalone, support, maintenance, and supplies, software-related services, and solutions at a cost not to exceed $1,600,000 over four years.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2230. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structures known as the Benai Israel synagogue located at 327 North Negley Avenue in Garfield in the 11th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city. And Bill 2231, resolution transferring the amount of $100,000 within the 2023 operating budget from Human Resources and Civil Service to the Office of Management and Budget to partially fund an agreement or agreements for the purchase and discharge of eligible healthcare debt.
Councilman Wilson.
I would like to wave a motion to weigh the rule, wave the motion, make a motion to weigh the rules for the second bill. I can't remember the number.
Yeah. Bill 2231.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. We have a motion.
So it appears on our standing committee. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on...
I'm going to register a no on that, Madam President.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I'll register a no as well. But the bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have one communication. Thank you.
Council President Kiel Smith presents Bill Number 2232. Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending September 30 of 2023.
Motion to read and receive and file, please.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Correct, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry.
Right?
I'm sorry. I was getting something from our solicitor about the previous bill, so I'll come back to that. Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, Madam Clerk, on the Bill 2230, it says on here that it needs to be held for a public hearing.
Yes, it's a historic structure. It's historic, not its designation.
Okay. And this is just introduction. Okay. We'll do that then.
Yeah, that is for standing committee.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. With that said, we move on to any unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? Not seeing none. We'll now move on to reports to committee for final action, and we will start with Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill 2199, reported to Committee on Finance and Law for November 20 of 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2122, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of a single payment in 2023 to 2826 Edwards Way Associates, LLC, and its attorneys, McMillan Law Offices, LLC, at a cost not to exceed $174,320 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 2146, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of a single payment in 2023 to Evelyn Mary Miller and her attorneys, Womer and Tyler Rico, LLC, at a cost not to exceed $35,000 in full and final settlement of litigation in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. They're finally passed. That moves us on to our next committee, which is Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2200, reported to Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for November 20 of 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2144, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with Allegheny County and the Department of Justice's Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $85,000 to support the purchase of new holsters.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes. They're finally passed. And that moves us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2201. Reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for November 20 of 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2164, resolution authorizing the taking, appropriating, and condemning by the City of Pittsburgh of certain easements necessary for the completion of temporary support work for land stabilization around Andover Terrace for public transportation purposes through eminent domain, and further authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary incidental acquisition costs related thereto at an amount not to exceed $19,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Human Resources, Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2202. Reported a committee on human resources for November 20 of 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2189, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Burn Along, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $20,004 for an unlimited access to the Burn Along, Inc. Health and Wellness Video Platform and Community Exercise Programs.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Warwick. Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
And Technology, right? And Technology. Sorry.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2203. Reported a committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for November 20 of 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2162, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of public safety, and the director of innovation and performance to enter into a professional service agreement or agreements with e-provval to provide film and event permitting application software at an overall cost to the city not to exceed $250,000 over five years. Bill 2163, resolution amending Resolution 650 of 2022, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with change agents training for access to their learning management system and consultative assistance to adapt the City of Pittsburgh Gold Belt Workshop for e-learning by increasing the approved amount by $36,000 for an additional one year with the option to renew for one more year, $18,000 per year, for an amended total cost not to exceed $72,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye on... Trying to think of the name of the first bill. Aye on Bill 2162 and no on Bill 2163.
Seven ayes, zero noes on Bill 2162, and six ayes, one no on Bill 2163.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. They're finally passed. That moves us to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. Councilman Kraus for Councilman Gross.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're already on it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2204. Reported a committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for November 20 of 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2145, resolution providing for a supplemental agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to reimburse expenses of PWSA incurred for roadway base and pavement restoration performed by PWSA on behalf of utilities in the city in advance of the Bus Rapid Transit Project not to exceed $696,705.92, an increase of $139,703.68 to the amount previously authorized by Resolution 474 of 2022.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes. They're finally passed. That moves us to motions and resolutions, and I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold budget hearings with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, PWSA, and Allegheny County Senatorate Authority, Elcasan. Both meetings will be chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November 29, council's standing committee's meeting is scheduled for 10 AM here in chambers. To register to speak for this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council's meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration will close at 9 AM tomorrow morning. Also, on Wednesday afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold budget hearings with the Department of Finance, chaired by Councilman Lavelle. On Thursday, November 30, at 10 AM, council's budget hearings will be held with the Department of Public Safety bureaus, which includes police, fire, EMS, and the Animal Care and Control, chaired by Councilman Coghill. And on Thursday afternoon at 1:30, council will hold our budget hearings with the Public Safety Bureau of Administration, the Office of Community Health and Safety, and the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, also chaired by Councilman Coghill. All budget meetings are live streamed via the City Channel, Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. And I will say that we have scheduled a meeting for Thursday, but we have to reschedule that date, and we'll have that out today for all City Council, the mayor's office, and the controller's office to work together. Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick, for the suggestion to work together on the 2024 budget.
Great.
And any amendments that may come forward from that. And we will likely also, as Councilman Kraus suggested, have a public meeting on that. Is there anything from members?
Madam President, may I just briefly? We had several people come for public comment to speak about urgency for housing on house people this winter as it relates to the bill that will be before us tomorrow. I just wanted it to be stated publicly that the action of the council tomorrow, after some brief discussion, I imagine, is to send it to Planning Commission for review and recommendation because it is a zoning change. And so, the Planning Commission will then have their process before they send it back to council. And so, I just wanted to offer realistic expectation that this is not something council's voting on tomorrow that it's going to be enacted within, you know, a week or two, that there will be a process which will probably go somewhat into the new year before it even comes back to the council for its consideration. So, just wanted to make that...
Thank you for that clarification. And I'm glad you said that. I have a lot of comments on this. I'll discuss them when we have our standing committee's meeting. But I will say, I think it's now incumbent upon council to come up with some solutions because this has been really a long time, and winter is here, and it is terribly cold out there. And so, I mean, I've talked to Councilman Coghill a little bit, Councilwoman Gross, and to all, and to you as well, and to some of the other members. And I just think that at this point, our residents and our people can't rely on us just sitting here and waiting for some solution. So, talking to our solicitors, see what we can legally do to help get people off the streets.
Thanks, Madam President.
And into warm shelter. Thank you. Anything else from members? With that said, I have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
移到
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Be safe, everyone.